So just go forward and then kind of say it's towards that team. He's going to do that. You'll be all right. Don't sweat.
We're good.
Is anybody on?
Nope.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome everybody to this first meeting for the month of February in the Mount Vernon City Council. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. And I've got one change in the agenda, that's tabling item G four, resolution for approval. Temper easement agreement by and between QuickTrip and the City of Mount Vernon. Do you want to talk about our follow plan or do we want to talk about everything, Chris?
I have to everybody. We will have a special meeting on Monday at five to five.
With that modification, I would move for approval of the agenda.
You would second to approve the agenda with that one modification. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And open the communications part of the agenda. If you wish to address the city council on any object, on any subject that's on the agenda, just wait until that time comes up on the agenda. If you hear speak something that's not on the agenda now, it's time to do it at the podium over here. So give you a minute if anybody wants to speak in public comment time.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
The meeting that you just mentioned on the QuickTrip, is that for public, open to the public or not?
Yep.
And location is here?
Will be here.
Okay.
There'll be an agenda posted, but probably not until Wednesday.
Okay, I'm gonna head out then.
There'll be more, there's more on QuickTrip tonight.
Oh, you're fine.
There are some that are and then there'll be some that.
Oh, okay.
So I just didn't want you to run away very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody here to speak in public comment section of the agenda? Okay, then we'll move to the second item of communications. That's both of office, Reserve Officer Laine Rowley. And if she will step forward, we're going to go through this over the office. Is this okay? My name is Sam Weesler, I'm the mayor and welcome and thank you for being involved here. I state your name.
Laine Rowley.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially do the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully and impartially do the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of police officer.
Discharge all the duties of the officer of police officer.
In the cities of Mount Vernon and Lisbon.
In the cities of Mount Vernon and Lisbon.
As now and hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
And this will be witnessed this third day of February twenty twenty-five in the city of Mount Vernon and I will sign off on that. Congratulations and thank you very much.
It's the most excitement we've had in these chairs. Even in our most contentious meetings.
You guys come back after four weeks.
I was just gonna say nobody ever cheers for me later. Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Obviously a big deal. Excellent softball team and.
You don't have to say to the rest.
Thank you, guys.
You left so fast.
They have to study.
I know he hired the whole team. She's a junior.
Moving on, consent agenda, five items on the consent agenda. Does there any questions or anything that might be pulled off?
I could, I did have one question, but I didn't get a chance to respond today. The device permit, number five, is actually a new permit that the state has created. It's not a new business, it's just a new permit. So that's why it's outside of the moratorium. The business is already there, it's just in order to comply with state law.
And so safe to assume these devices are like vaporizers, wherever that phrase is. Okay, gotcha. And new as of January twenty twenty-five or something?
The new law for January twenty twenty-five requires those to be permitted separately.
Okay.
I approve the agenda that's presented.
Stay a minute. You, Paul and Craig, I'll go with. You would second to approve the consent agenda with that one explanation?
I think they just won the tournament.
All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're in a public hearing. Public hearing on a proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan, Business Thirty Master Plan, and official zoning map to rezone parcels located in Flatiron Survey twenty-eight fifty-seven, Business Park, General Commercial, and officially opened, a public meeting. Now, let's be public hearing. Anybody here to speak to that item?
So this is, so there's two parcels. There's two different parts of survey that make up what would be QuickStar's future property. Parcel, the first parcel closest to Highway one is currently sitting in G C, General Commercial. The far west parcel is sitting in B P Business Park. According to the Business Thirty Master Plan, G C is compatible with highway-oriented commercial, so it would need to be rezoned at a minimum to G C. The business plan also goes on to state that only two of the four corners of the exit on and off ramp can have highway-oriented commercial. So this will set the stage for what amounts to the northwest quarter will be highway-oriented commercial and then one other.
And it could be across the street or a catty corner.
Doesn't have to be a term yet, but my guess would be on the other side, the outside of Business C. So this is a continuation of B C, it's not spot building, it's just a new one.
Make sure your explanation, is there anybody, again, last call? No one wants to speak during this public hearing, Paul? If not, then we are, I will close the public hearing and we'll move to F two. That ordinance two-three twenty-two-five A, Amendment to Comprehensive Plan, Business Thirty Master Plan, and Official Zoning Map, to the parcels located in the Flatiron Survey number twenty-eight fifty-seven, Business Park to General Commercial.
I would, I would ask the council, for people who know public comment, to consider waiting for this. They are trying to close on property by the seventeen and the quarter, I'm assuming it's a full.
So there's no other questions. I would move to approve ordinance two-dash-three-dash-twenty-twenty-five A, Amendment to Comprehensive Plan, Business Thirty Master Plan, and Official Zoning Map to Rezone Parcels Located in Flatiron Survey twenty-eight fifty-seven, from B P Business Park to G C, General Commercial.
Moving seconded to move forward with the, this ordinance, and is that, and that's covering both readings?
We have to get it together still.
Any other comments about that, first item we're gonna vote on? Roll call, roll here. Last call for questions. Is there here, are none, Marsha?
Trevor?
Yes.
West? Yes. Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
I'm moving to the second part of that.
I would move to proceed to the second reading and suspend rules.
Is it we have seconded and moved to the third, is that?
Yes. Second act.
Paul and Craig? Any questions about that? That satisfied, it's asked request here, and I think it's Marsha, the roll.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
And that ordinance also passes. Going back to F one, ordinance one-twenty-twenty-five A, Amendment Chapter one fifteen, Cemetery, City of Mount Vernon, I will municipal code. No comments, anyone in the public want that one?
We've moved to approve ordinance one-dash-twenty-dash-twenty-twenty-five A, Amendment Chapter one fifteen, Cemetery, to the City of Mount Vernon, municipal code.
Craig?
Second.
Next call. Moving seconded to move forth, one-twenty-twenty-five A. And I think we are ready to follow all.
Anderson?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Take care of ordinance, it's moving to resolution for approval. Resolution two-three twenty-two-five A, approving the local match for the Hazard Mitigation Systems Program. And you want to put note for this is that that does involve a document that all council members will sign off on here. And you want to add any explanation?
So with the prospective addition at the L B C, one component of that would be the possibility of a safe room, storm shelter. There's actually a planning grant, so we can go to the cost of hiring an architect. O K N is already state-sponsored, a state-approved, so we can continue to use O K N. Our match would be a maximum of eight thousand two hundred fifty dollars, but this would cover the cost of designing the safe room should that addition potentially be included.
Does the addition of the safe room beyond providing added safety and security, does it open us up for other grants or any of that sort of thing?
So the actual safety grant itself, so one of the, one of the reasons they go through this process is FEMA has a formula based upon open space, if there's desk, if there's furniture, like, they will go through and they'll give you a maximum allowed individuals for the safe room. Be great, since it's right next to the school, if I could count the school, but I can't view the school as a safe venue, so you can't move individuals from one safe venue to the safe room by going outdoors. So they'll calculate the number of people within a certain radius of the L B C, capacity of the L B C, and their square footage of available space, and then you're eligible for agreeing with a similar match requirement. So essentially the city would have maybe fifteen percent who will qualify for the safe room. Kind of a, it's a little bit back and forth to add to the clock, obviously you're ramping up construction for the safe room, but if you cover eighty-five percent of it.
Unless there are other questions or concerns, I would move approval of resolution two-dash-three-dash-twenty-twenty-five A.
I'll second.
Yes, I'll second. We're looking at that building as more as a community center, putting a generator in there, a safe room, goes along with the same thing. Motion on the floor to approve local match for the Hazard Mitigation Systems, and ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
I'm not sorry to write that, okay? Sorry.
Good job, Paul.
I've done another section here.
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Paul's new title is Sergeant of Parks.
Good job there, too. And I have written on side here, roll call, but, timing for the signatures, how do you want to do that?
I can get them tonight.
Oh, okay.
If that's okay?
All right, we don't want to slow up your process there. Resolution two, two-twenty-three, twenty-four B, approving the public utility easement agreement by and between L R D Corporation and the City of Mount Vernon.
So this is, with the map, Highway one, QuickStar would be here, Rachel would actually come across and match up to this green area. This is for sanitary sewer, actually take it back up to Business Thirty, water comes off the Highway one, it's a lot of fun.
So site plan is happening now, part of this, or is that separate?
So all of the easements need to be approved as part of the site plan process. You'll approve all of one of the easements tonight, including the Flatiron Survey for Rachel, the site plan, and you'll have warranty fee and another easement to approve minimum on Monday, next Monday.
I approve approval of resolution two-dash-three-dash-twenty-twenty-five B.
Thank you, Paul. Motion on the floor to approve two-twenty-three twenty-two-five B, and we're ready to vote on that, Marsha, are you ready?
Rose?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
That resolution passes. We are on to two-twenty-three twenty-two-five C, approving stormwater easement agreement by and between QuickTrip, L R D Corporation, and the City of Mount Vernon.
Same thing. Stormwater easement would follow the south, west border of what would be QuickStar's future property. The current stormwater sits just to the northeast of that line. It will be vacated potentially next Monday, as part of this all, this whole process. So you approve this one, and we're moving the line south beyond border, and then you'll vacate the existing actual construction.
All right, without questions, I'll move to approve resolution two-dash-three-dash-twenty-twenty-five C, stormwater easement agreement by and between QuickTrip, L R D, and the City of Mount Vernon.
Stephanie, second. Second by Stephanie Mark, forward on two-twenty-three, two-three twenty-two-five C, and Marsha, you ready?
Trevor?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Already tabled number four, number five, two-twenty-three twenty-two-five P, approving the bid packet and setting a public hearing date for sale of public property located at ten forty Second Avenue Northwest, locally known as the Old Mount Vernon Public Workshop. Make sure you get this packaged together fairly quickly, so we can put it out there.
Bidding due February twenty-eighth and four, minimum bid amount is two hundred ninety-five thousand, and you would have potentially considered this on March thirty twenty twenty-five. I will, as I told the mayor tonight, want to point out that one individual in that head more or less kind of initiated this process, has decided that he'll probably withdraw from bidding, which is fine, we'll go to it out, see if there's any bids, and if not, we'll look on different.
Chris, who's the real turnover?
Oh, really? Just a city staff on the turn.
It's a great values, but you may.
With that, I would move approval of resolution two-dash-three-dash-twenty-twenty-five E, approving the bid packet and setting a new hearing date.
Second, Scott and Craig. Moving seconded on resolution two-three twenty-two-five B, approve of the packet and set the public hearing date. And no more questions, ready to vote on that, Marsha?
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Resolution two-three twenty-two-five F, approving the Flatiron Survey twenty-eight ninety-eight to the City of Mount Vernon.
So you've already approved creating two parcels, now you're creating two different parcels, so those two are actually combining and creating a new parcel A, two one seven six acres, in which QuickStar would be located, and then parcel B, the one point three two acres, would be where Rachel's strip would get extended to the left.
I would move to approve resolution two-dash-three-dash-twenty-twenty-five F.
I'll second.
Craig and Stephanie, moving seconded, and we're both two-three twenty-two-five F. Any other comments or questions? Ready to vote on that, please, Marsha?
Rose?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
That resolution passes. No proclamations or old business, approving of the motions for approval, that things listed, sent out this afternoon, Marsha? Questions, anything to pull off of that?
If there are none, I will move to approve a claims list.
Stephanie? Moving seconded to approve the most recent claims list, as a voice vote, and no questions, ready to vote on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion consideration of site plan approval of the QuickStar, QuickTrip Incorporated, Council Action, and D.
So you have, I thought I'd be talking about this play this night. P and Z recommended approval of this application. Casey Bonder with QuickStar is actually in the audience, they did have to request minor deviations to the Business Thirty Master Plan as it relates to lighting and sidewalks. Not necessarily putting sidewalks in until we reach a point where they will become necessary. And they're asking for some lighting concessions. Otherwise, I'm gonna pay with Casey. Is it the question?
Welcome, Casey. Again.
Good evening. Yes. Okay, good. Good evening. Thank you again tonight for reviewing all of these items on the agenda, we greatly appreciate it and are hopefully looking forward to all those plans to clean store in Mount Vernon. So I think we have had a couple of questions that I wanted to touch on first, and then I'll go to the site plan. Question related to, so there's references to QuickTrip Inc. and QuickStar, and just to clarify, so QuickTrip Inc. is the major company, parent company, based out of La Crosse, Wisconsin. When we expanded into Iowa, we were named QuickTrip initially, and there was confusion like on the radio, there'd be deals, and when we say QuickTrip, there was also Q T, QuickTrip with a Q. And so at that point, we decided to name in Iowa, Illinois, and South Dakota are all QuickStar, just to clarify so there's no confusion between Q T and K T, so. So anyway, what the site plan that you've proposed in front of you is our Generation Three Convenience Store Building. It's our newest building, ninety-two hundred square, or approximately ninety-two hundred square feet, with, that will have, you know, everything, our grocery items to bakery items, hotspot, and beverages too, that you look to pick up. We've also proposed a attached car wash, single bay car wash, and then two lanes of side diesel and ten gas dispensers up under the canopy. So we have addressed, we did receive comments from the city engineer, and I've been working with Lee, on addressing those comments, and I think we've come to agree on all of them, except the lighting. So our standard lighting, such as, for example, the Marion location that has the side diesel and North Liberty right off of I three eighty, those are closer to our standard lighting. We do have cut-off lighting in the parking lot, so it really shoots down, but under the gas and diesel canopies, we really prefer to have brighter lights for truck drivers looking to check their engines, they obviously need a little bit brighter light to look at that at night, and then also people with vehicles too, they need to assess their vehicles for any damage or things not working. So really, I think under the gas canopy and diesel canopy is where we're looking for the city council to approve a concession. I think the code currently allows thirty-foot candles under the gas canopy and diesel canopy. I think that's right. And we need it for the most part, except for the gas canopy closest to the store, so we want to make sure too that it's bright enough for guests walking from the gas canopy to the store. So I think looking at our lighting plan, closest to the store, it's like around thirty-eight point something foot candles, and under the diesel canopy, we're showing fifty-seven foot candles. So those lights are up under, like flushed with the gas canopy shooting straight down. Again, just a safety and then also for our guests looking at vehicles or trucks. So that is our request for a concession on lighting. Is there any questions?
If I'm reading the analysis correctly, it looks like item C says that fuel canopy illumination levels to be set at a maximum of twenty-two foot candles? Am I correct in that?
And I think that was, we're operating twenty-four hours, and so I think there was, I don't know, a reference to it, that its after hours was at a twenty-two, and since we're an all twenty-four hour business, that it went up to thirty.
Which would make sense, because if it's standard thirty, it looks like from ten P M. to six, and we reduce it to sixty percent, so that would, that twenty-two would make sense then. Okay. Thank you.
I'm curious to ask, was the brick part of your original plan?
Yes, that is, yep, our standard look, I guess, for all of our stores.
I like it because it's in keeping more of our design standards. And I do want to say, Lee, nice job on this. It's really nice to see the document with simple bullet points, you know, we can easily read it, so thank you for the job that you're doing on this. You're simplifying some complex things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Lee, you recommend that you approve this?
So staff recommends the P and Z, community recommends the council.
At every, at every point along there, it's been recommended to make these concessions.
So P and Z did not give this concession. Ultimately, that falls to you.
So does that mean part of the motion?
If you're going to allow, yes.
Okay, and I apologize, I was trying to read and listen at the same time, and I knew while I was doing it that was a mistake. So standard is thirty, and what, again, are you asking for?
I think your code allows thirty foot candles, and so we're asking, since it's like thirty-eight point something, we would suggest forty-foot candles under the gas canopy and fifty-seven under the diesel canopy. And I did forget to mention too, on the site plan, we have a couple picnic tables, like on the south part of our building, and in order to get to the ratio, I think, that what was needed, we would have to take out a parking lot light pole, and so it was very difficult to get to exactly that ratio, and that was the only area in the parking lot area that we could not meet. So it was that picnic table area under the gas canopy and under the diesel.
But this is under those two canopies, and it's directed down towards the cars and the gas, so.
It would be the equivalent in your home, the camp lighting.
Right, okay, I just, I don't want another softball field, so.
Yeah.
There is a photometric, so when you, this is kind of a, this is what a photometric looks like, and they've got all the points and how much lighting is used in the property. Could now be a little bit easier version to show you exactly what light you're going to be getting, versus trying to figure out all the dots. All in all, still should be less intrusive than some of the other development areas. I think that was the goal of the Business Thirty Plan, is to make sure, one, that the development is conducive with the rest of Mount Vernon, and two, the compliments, and sets a standard for battery and energy flow. And I just want to address one thing that hasn't been talked about, I did receive some questions at the L B C as it relates to whether or not this would be a truck stop, and the answer is no, part of the Business Thirty Plan, where many of that potential or hybrid oriented, they can't. back potential or hybrid oriented, they can't have trucks because they can fuel, but there's no overnight.
It looks to me also that there's actually more plantings of really ornamental stuff that is, wasn't necessarily in the photo, but in the, in the separate plan, and so I appreciate that, again, with those standards without. The, I like the picnic tables, because we've always talked about encouraging walkability, and eventually we'll put those sidewalks in and start saying that outside.
Speaking of the picnic tables, Chris, in your kind of lead-in, you mentioned kind of an amorphous definition of when they're deemed necessary or something. How, how are these?
Sidewalks, yeah. So for us to require or basically go back to the business and tell them that it's time, there has to be a safety or safely traveled area to get there. So if Rachel Street were to extend to the west, possibly reach back up to business thirty, or the traffic light, which I really highly doubt will ever happen, or is ever changed for pedestrian crossing to Highway One, or there ends up being a road surface that would go back to the north through Plaza and New Ridge, those would trigger those sidewalk construction. But again, putting in sidewalks to encourage walkability when you can't get to it, just means they're going to be able to walk around on their own shift.
So this doesn't, if we were to approve this modification to the, to the plan, to what we expect out of construction up there, this doesn't hamstring us on the other side of Highway One if we were to, because there's already residential folks, like, back in there, and we're currently building a residential building back there, so I can see more sidewalks being necessary sooner over there than over here.
No, I agree. Council has the ability at any moment in time to require sidewalk construction at any lot. And that analysis should just be done as far as, wouldn't it, of these developments? You're less likely to see waivers on these sides of Highway One to you, otherwise.
Thank you.
Okay, we move approval of the Quickstar site plan with the modification of allowing for the forty candle under the canopies. There's a question.
One is forty, one is fifty. Diesel is?
Oh, diesel is fifty, yep.
I just want to make sure.
Thank you, yeah. Trust me, I'm with you, bro.
And I think, are we including these sidewalk?
And it was fifty-seven, fifty-seven foot candles under the diesel.
Okay, fifty-seven, thank you.
And is the sidewalk accommodated?
The sidewalk, you don't necessarily have to make it accommodated for you, any council at any point in the future can require them to be.
I'll second that. Sorry. Keep the eye on your toes.
Paul and Scott, now we get open for discussion. There's a discussion.
Oh, that one's, yeah.
Further discussion. Counselperson, Wes, a little bit earlier, thanks much for planning and zoning. First of all, for having sort of meetings to get us to this point, and go through the process according to our design standards from a decade ago, or whatever it was, to get us to this place. So thank you, P and Z. Move second to move forward the site plan and our approval. And if you raise your vote on that, it's a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Next item is discussion.
I would just like to echo Councilmember Wes's comment. Thank you for the great package. It truly does make things easier for everyone, and I know there are a lot of excited people in our community.
Yes. Thank you.
As I stand as referenced, I know the city gets requests from businesses in that area, but they are whole chefs, basically. I mean, so the fact that we're not writing every detail on a site plan specification is delightful. And we're standing by our standards that we set, like I said, a decade ago, when it comes to design.
And I would like to augment what Paul said and direct it to Lee. Having gone through the design standards process when we put the business thirty master plan together, that was a nightmare. So putting it into the language that I don't feel like I need to tear my eyeballs out and say, look at, and I appreciate that, so, thank you.
Any other discussion on that?
Thank you.
Moving to number, we asked you if you'd be here on Wednesday night or not. I would encourage for you to. Skip, okay, please don't fill.
We can zoom in.
Sounds good.
There will be a zoom option, because we do that for all council meetings now, but.
We'll make sure we clear that up before you get on.
Okay.
Thank you for being here. Just want to let you back in the morning. The report motion for approval is discussion consideration professional services agreement between the City of Alberta and Dixon Engineering for water tower cleaning projects.
The engineering services agreement's in the amount of five thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Dixon Engineering would put the specifications together for the tower cleaning, and then they would be onsite to ensure, basically, they're watching for any potential damage. The water tower is going to have to be painted at some point within the next two to three years. They are going to watch to make sure that when the tower gets power washed, that the paint does not chip off or hit exposed areas that need to be fixed at that point. Washing, I believe, I didn't even put a number out there, I think it's less than fifty. Painting is like three hundred and fifty. So washing it now, trying to get the discoloration off the tower, and then just another, at some point in the next two to three years, it'll be painting.
So this isn't actually painting, it's?
We're cleaning.
This is actually just.
This is just pointing at it and going, this ought to be cleaned. And I mean, there's some other stuff involved.
Twenty paints are about the same.
That's what we're doing. Also, seriously.
Right?
I want a pressure washer.
I do want to know real quick before we get into, like, gave me a headache. Sure, sorry too. The owner is the city of Mountie, Vernon, Iowa, of Everyfooter.
Yeah.
Yes. Got a slight headache.
Good catch. I wasn't going to.
Gotta get that off my chest.
With that?
The guy just wants to see if there are panes.
With that modification, I would move approval of the professional services agreement between the City of Melbourne and Dixon Engineering, totaling fifty-five to twenty-five.
Scott Mark, we seconded to move forward Dixon Engineering for water tower cleaning project. And if you're ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is discussion consideration of fuel system purchase for city vehicles. Public Works facility will council action as needed.
So we continue to look for ways to reduce our reliance on credit cards and buying gas commercially at locations. Our current facility, we're by the Bryant, or by the Winters Park in the pool. The tanks themselves are situated in such a manner that it's not convenient for a fire truck or any other larger apparatus to get in there and be able to get back out. With the new site, we would be able to put two thousand gallon tanks. There would be dual walls, so we wouldn't necessarily have to worry about spill basin around them. And locate them in such a manner that not only could color works, but PD, City Hall, and Fire all coordinate and fill tanks there, buying in bulk. Obviously saves the city money, and we're trying to figure out how to do that every day. So the recommendation is, and I forgot to ask you, is it seventy thousand?
Seven thousand fifty dollars per tank for the thousand gallon dual wall tank.
So about fifteen thousand dollars for the tanks to buy two one diesel.
And if we, if we did the single wall tanks like we currently have at the Public Works facility, we would have to have a dyke system built around that. By the time we invest the money in the dyke system, we just won't buy the dual wall tanks. It makes them more mobile too. If we want to move them into a different spot, we can, but it helps. The cost is going to be the same either way, so.
To be on a concrete pad?
Yes.
Oh, these would be, oh, okay.
This thing's really good.
The goal is, if you.
It's just break.
The goal would be to concrete all the way around the building locations, but I'll be giving you that for it, so it might be a little bit longer.
Well, I'm going to move to approve the fuel system purchase by Public Works for Melbourne.
Second.
And a quick, no, no, not, I mean, just, just more out of curiosity. And I'm not necessarily expecting you guys to have, because I'm going to have to nod your head, but, like, especially PD or Public Works, do you know approximately, like, what percentage of budget goes towards fuel costs?
I know it fluctuates, depending on, you know, in the winter time, snow, down, that sort of thing, obviously, we use more diesel than we do the rest of the year, but I don't have a, I'm not.
And again, I ask not expecting, just.
We track our gallons and dollars. We roughly spend about two thousand dollars a month on fuel for the police department that we pay, we're getting at P and P rates.
Say, have we let them know?
We have not yet. And it will not be a quick transition. We'll have to get things set up.
I noticed that Cedar County Co-op was selected. Swindus always used Lynn County Co-op for decades, probably. Did you put it out to bid per se at all, or that's because?
Uh, we use Lynn County, actually.
Oh, is it Lynn County?
Yeah.
Okay, so the vendor's different than what's in the motion?
Yeah, I did not have the.
Crazy.
No, but the new tanks. I haven't someone.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So the fifteen is just to buy the two tanks, then there will be, putting him in.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about, there could be additional expenses at some point in the future. We've talked about trying to figure out the best way to track our push button tracking so that we can not rely on the employee and a bigger copy to track how many, or actually putting them, which is how we will start, but there are other more advanced technologies out there. We haven't priced them yet. Really kind of boils down to when we find a suitable location to, and work from all departments, then we can decide what is the best, best program to make that happen.
Lynn County directed me to a company called Actara Group in Marion, who would, they deal with the security setups for those, because Lynn County doesn't, I have not called any of it to see what happens, but some sort of keypad or key fob setup, or, you know, who's, who's getting gas.
Making sure that, you know, I can't just drive up and film my gas.
While you're dropping off condoms.
Right, exactly. Yeah, glass.
So this, this motion is specifically for the tanks, and maybe that process started here. It's been moved second at this point. Any other questions or comments about that? I will thank staff, because this was an item that came up in bucket about the number of credit cards. And this is, while I was looking for, we were from step A to step B on the credit card issue, we've gone from step A to about a step E to resolve a lot of different things in that process with the tanks and another vendor and so on, and probably save some money too. All right, ready to vote on that one? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Discussion consideration of solid repairs to police station.
Thank you. Besides emailing counsel and everybody the great news last week, when our main water line that was put in was frozen, and after the new construction, we called Septagon, they came right back out, took a look at everything from that standpoint, got heat tape placed on the line that was freezing. The main issue was the old soffit that was originally installed in the church around the entire building is all vented. So if you look at your house, there might be some soffit that's vented. Every single piece was vented. And when you opened up the hatch above where the water lines are installed during the, especially during the cold spell, it was arctic gusts of wind, unbelievable through there, which has moved some insulation around as well. So Septagon was, quickly came in, landed, put some wood up in the attic to block the air, replaced the main soffit areas that was causing the issue in this area. Immediately noticed a dramatic decrease in the amount of airflow through there, but still adequate venting for, is required for a building anyway. So hopefully, we're going to have it resolved from this standpoint. There's a couple of concerns in the men's locker room where the pipes go down into the south wall. And so we're hopeful that the additions and the corrections that we've made will keep that main line open, which will keep that flowing as well. If not, they may have to cut into the drywall, pack in behind there somehow, and, and deal with the PEX that's in there. Fortunately, it was all PEX, none of it was copper. So we didn't have a burst, we didn't have any issues that way. All the lines are still in place, so we're just trying to prevent a future, larger problem from that. And then they brought in more blown insulation and filled that back up to about an R-36. So feeling pretty confident, Septagon is feeling very confident that this should resolve that issue for us.
So the estimated amount of seventy-nine, seventy-one oh seven, that covers the work that they have done for bandit, get you up and running again, and to correct it.
Everything's done, yeah, they, they came, they came in right away and knocked it out Tuesday and Wednesday. Their invoice department, payroll department works just as quickly as they do, because they got the, they got the actual invoice today, and it was three hundred dollars. It's about seventy-six hundred dollars was the final price, so that'll be coming through. But every, all the work is complete, they had it done Tuesday, and then Wednesday morning, they were out of there, so.
This work was completed on a emergency, because the water lines are broken.
I understand.
If it needed to happen.
All right, I'll move to approve the soffit repairs by Septagon Construction, not to exceed seventy-nine, seventy-one oh seven.
And also?
Scott, not to exceed seventy-nine, is that okay? You can just go with the actual figure, you got the seventy-six whatever?
Yeah, it's, I don't have the exact, I can get it to you quick.
That's what I'm calling, that's what I'm maxing. Move second to move forward the soffit repair payment to Septagon, and if you're in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion passes. Discussion consideration of dedication, partial B and flat D, double the cloud survey twenty-eight ninety to the City of Melbourne for regular council action as needed.
I apologize, this should have actually been with G four.
Well, I thought we just.
Yeah, these are the two items that you're going to consider.
Okay, so that's.
Table.
Good, no problem. Well, moving to reports, Mayor, Pastor Administrator. There's three things, and then a couple of different meetings and communications, like emails about the Lynn County Trail Association's interest in inner of trails, generates more interest in getting some donations. And they're excited at the suggestion that we're going to, our own Elven will be possibly pouring trail for eight mile, quarter mile, whatever it is, on a longer motor course like West of Bryant. So that's generated interest on the county level. Second thing was that, today a conference board meeting this Thursday, and third thing is there's a sustainability committee meeting this Thursday, a couple of new members coming in for that. That's all that I have basically to report. Any questions? Chris's report? The other committees? That concludes all the reports from different people. And now I think we need to have a motion voting call session.
Thank you.
September Mark. Motion to approve voting close session. And if you're in favor of that, all in favor of the closing close session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.